Recording in progress.
Good afternoon. It's now on June 5, 2024, and I'd like to call work session order. Ms. Clark, can you tell?
Brenham. Q. McBride. Livingston.
Here.
Teresa.
Here.
Walker. Barron.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mackey.
Here.
English. Newton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Thank you to all of my colleagues that have taken time to be here today for this work session. This is a work session that has been scheduled as part of our transportation improvement roadmap that we have been following now for several months. And this is an important work session for us to look at and finalize projects, principles, and allocations for proposed new transportation penny. So thank you for being here, and I appreciate your attendance as well as engagement. So we have two items for discussion this afternoon. And I guess Attorney Wright, can I turn it over? Or did you, the staff had anything they want to say before we turn it over?
You can turn it over now.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to recognize Mr. Ray Jones.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Good evening. Afternoon.
Other members of council are both with us and participating virtually. So Emily Luther, my partner, and I are here today to kind of give the council an update on where we are. Some of you have heard the update and others have not. We've got a presentation we're going to walk through. And of course, we're going to go through the roadmap and kind of let you know where we are on the roadmap. So if we could begin, and we'll go ahead and go to the PowerPoint presentation as we pull it up. We're going to do a couple of things today. The first thing we want to do is give you a sense of what's been going on sort of globally. And you can go to that second slide. We also then want to spend some time with you going through what we call the Principles Document. That's actually part of your agenda today. That document was sent out to you along with the agenda. We're going to go through what we call the Categorized Needs List, and then we're going to talk about our next steps. And along the way, we're going to talk about the allocation of the penny, which is an item that was discussed at length in the last Transportation Ad Hoc meeting. So if we can go to the next slide, one of the things I wanted to just review with you is sort of where we are on the roadmap. We have gone through now 15 different public meetings. Every meeting in gray has occurred, and as you all know, some of those meetings were scheduled, some were specially called meetings. Those meetings include this council coming together, the Transportation Penny Advisory Committee, as well as the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee of Council. We now, we still have four or so public meetings remaining as we continue to consider the penny. Before we move on, I think it would be appropriate just to say thank you to the Transportation Penny Advisory Committee, who have met on a number of occasions. Much of what you see today is the sweat over their brow in terms of the principles, as well as the categorized needs list. And of course, all of that has then been reported to the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee. So those two bodies have worked together. We can go to the next slide. And we think that's important to highlight this for this council because everything you're going to see today has had eyes on it from these two bodies over the last almost three months. And so we think that's important. Counsel was very direct at the beginning of this process, asking for input and advice from these two entities. And so that's happened in all the meetings and sort of discussions that council would have wanted, we think, has occurred here over the last several months. So as we talk about the principles, and we can go to the next slide, I think it is important that folks recognize that these are in fact a true collaboration of the T-PAC and Transportation Ad Hoc. There have been changes made along the way, items that T-PAC may have suggested that the Transportation Ad Hoc wanted to change or modify in some way. And so recognizing that all of you have had these for a little while, we just wanted to highlight some of the elements of the principles. And if I could, just for context, just to remind everybody, why are the principles important? Counsel began this journey on this particular penny, wanting to make sure that the program, if approved by the voters, would be as dynamic as possible. In other words, being able to deal with changes as they come. And so rather than taking the needs list, which has been compiled by our friends at Stantec and also added to by municipalities and others, and then commented on and modified a little bit by the Transportation Penny Advisory Committee, rather than taking that and seeking to prioritize all of it now, and seeking to assign cost to all of it now, counsel has elected to go a slightly different direction, and that is to adopt a set of principles pursuant to which the new penny program will be managed and pursuant to which the needs that have been identified will actually become projects and be prioritized. And so this document, this Principles Document, is one that we anticipate will continue to live on with the penny. This is a document that we anticipate County Council will approve by resolution, not by ordinance when the time comes, and by approving it by resolution, leaving itself open the opportunity, if it needs to, to make changes in the future to these principles. But these principles represent the collective thought and wisdom of everybody in this room, as well as others who have attended the various public meetings. And so what we want to do is just go through a couple of highlights in the principles. The first thing I'd like to start with is what we call the general conditions of the principles. In other words, these are overarching guidelines that would impact the management of the entire new penny program. And they include some things that may seem obvious, but some things that are very important to this council and have been discussed and approved by council. But the things that we want to point out first, that each transportation need has to be addressed in accordance with applicable policies and ordinances of the county. In other words, the work that's already been done by council is still in place. So to the extent council has already put in place mechanisms by which dirt road paving, for instance, would be prioritized, all that's still in effect. Those ordinances are still in effect. The council's in the middle of a strategic planning process, so this program will be managed, so it supports the strategic objectives of the county. Many of you are well aware of the penny guidelines that were originally introduced and provided to Ritson County and now have been provided to all counties in the state pursuant to South Carolina Revenue Ruling 22-2, and they represent the Department of Revenue's input on how transportation penny programs should be managed. And last but not least, each county council district is to receive a minimum of $20 million in funding from the new penny for projects in the community investment or county advancement categories, which is another element that was discussed specifically by this council. We can go to the next slide, please. And we're being very careful just to identify highlights, but if you all have flipped through the principles, you recognize it's a 10-plus-page document. There's a lot in there, so we encourage you to continue to be looking at it as we steam toward third reading and adoption of these on July 16. But a couple of other principles we'd like to highlight for you are things that have been, I think, right at the forefront of discussions of the council. The first one is the issue of the 2012 needs. So 2012 needs being those projects that are viable, but were unfunded. There were not enough money to get them done. Been a lot of conversation around those 2012 projects. To be very clear, this penny program shall be managed so that the 2012 projects will be addressed first. And those projects, they're going to be prioritized in accordance with any applicable ordinance of the county, to the extent one exists. And if not, they'll be prioritized in accordance with the principles. But first dollars will be spent on the 2012 needs. The other item that has been discussed specifically by the county council was wanting to ensure that if a project was designed to serve a community that was otherwise isolated, where ingress and egress maybe was through a single road, that those needs also be covered. And so they have been. You'll see when you look at the project scoring in the overall impact and cost ratio element, as well as the safety element, that issue in isolated community has been taken into account. Next, you'll see in the community investment project description that we have incorporated all the things that we've been discussing, but we've also incorporated unfunded 2012 projects to make it consistent with the overall principle, overarching principle that's being applied in the program. Go to the next slide, please. I want to discuss emerging needs if we can. This has been a concept that council asked us to look at, and we have confirmed that a number of penny programs are now doing this, and this has now been put forth by our council. And that's something as simple as there are things that will occur in our community, there are needs that will emerge in our community that we don't know about yet. And so these principles incorporate a process to regularly meet and identify those needs and have them pulled into the overall list of needs that are being addressed by the Transportation Penny Program. When we say emerging needs, what are we talking about? Well, just to give you some recent examples. So a company like Scout Motors comes and needs a lot of roadwork, some of which is not being paid for by the state. So some of that work could become an emerging need. Or if we have another natural event that causes bridges to be, you know, brushed out and flushed out, or roads to be overtaken by water such that we need quick repair, those kinds of items could then be introduced into the emerging needs category and dealt with through the project scoring and handled. So it's very important to the council that the program be dynamic, and it is. The final thing I'd like to talk about, if you'll go to the next slide, please. And again, we're just highlighting some things that are in the principles that have been discussed, is the role of T-PAC. So on a go-forward basis, T-PAC is seeking to remain involved with the new penny. You may recall that you all took the very unusual but important step of charging them specifically to get us to the point we're at right now, and they did so and met their deadline. But on an ongoing basis, they're offering to continue to provide input to the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee to enable not only emerging needs to be identified, but to the extent there are questions about projects, questions about how projects are prioritized, to be available as a resource. They're also very firm in their belief that the annual state of the penny, to keep the citizens informed, is something that will remain important, and they're offering to remain involved in that. And so we wanted to show you that not only did the T-PAC do its work and do it on time, but has offered to stay involved in a way that's helpful to the council. Let's go to the next slide, please. You all have seen, let's go back one, I'm sorry. You all have seen a very comprehensive needs list, and Mr. Beatty, who's here with Stantec, has already spent some time talking with the council about that needs list and about the process and how we got to the needs list. So what the T-PAC did is they took the needs list, augmented it to some extent, and we'll highlight what they did. And then they also adopted and approved a categorized needs list. In other words, you all have heard the categories before: community investment projects, county advancement projects, and of course, comment enhancement as well. But with respect to those first two categories, the T-PAC approved a categorized needs list where Mr. Beatty's needs that he identified in his study, as well as the needs that have been submitted by the various municipalities and other stakeholders, have been put into categories because those categories are what drive this work and will also be what drives the referendum question that would be approved on July 16. And what's important about this is that not only did the T-PAC approve the categories that the needs were placed into, but they also looked at some of the needs and suggested that they be increased. For instance, there were programmatic expenditures on the Stantec list that covered a 12-year period that included things like resurfacing and dirt road repaving. Those numbers have been increased on recommendation of the T-PAC because this is a 25-year penny. Originally, when it started out, we were thinking it might be shorter. So additional dollars have been assigned to those needs to make sure there's sufficient dollars to take care of those needs when the time comes. So the categorized needs list is an evolution of the Stantec needs list. And if we can go now to the next page, I'll show you some real numbers. It's a little bit small, but hopefully you can see it. So again, these are all the Stantec needs with additional augmentation by the T-PAC, put into categories. You'll see the first one is community investment needs. You'll see an example of what falls under the community investment needs listing or category. You'll see a number there, $2.7 billion. Want to make you aware of a couple of things. The numbers changed a little bit from the time that Stantec submitted its original needs list, or its most recent needs list, to where we are today. Why did they change? A couple of things: trying to take into account some of the soft costs that are associated with the projects, and taking into account an increase in programmatic-related projects so that we have sufficient dollars put away for dirt road paving and resurfacing. So the original numbers you may have seen, you may have been thinking 3.1 somewhere in there, but you'll see that both the community investment needs and then down below, the county advancement needs, when you add those two together, were about 4.1. And so you'll also, I think, take note that the community investment needs actually add up to more, 2.7, than the county advancement needs, which add up to about 1.4. Now, the other thing I want to highlight for you is the dollars you see in front of you are not subject to inflation yet. ACA Thomas has done a great job of running several different analyses, trying to determine what do these costs look like on an inflated basis? That number is somewhere, I don't want to speak for her, but somewhere between $8 and $10 billion. The working number we have in here is eight, but that doesn't, we're not limited in some way, we're not holding each other back, we have no idea what inflation will look like, but we have estimated that to do $4.1 billion worth of projects over 25 years would probably cost more like eight, right? And you all have experienced the same inflation the rest of us have, right? So if you'll flip the page with me, we're about to wrap up our portion, and then we're going to answer questions. We wanted to give you some sense of how the T-PAC and Transportation Ad Hoc reacted to the categorized needs list. Both of them supported the categorized needs list, and both of them noted that notwithstanding our prior conversations, that the needs falling in the community investment category were actually more than the needs that were falling in the county advancement category. And you might say, well, what's the difference? Well, remember, county advancement tend to be projects that have been, or needs that have been identified that have a countywide impact. Community investment needs are projects that have a day-to-day impact on our citizens, things like bikeways and sidewalks and repaving and dirt road paving, and we just happen to have identified more needs that fall into that category. And so as a result, both bodies, both the T-PAC recommended some consideration, and then the Transportation Ad Hoc Committee suggested some consideration to maybe think about reallocating the penny. So how did we allocate the penny before? If we can go to the next slide. You may recall that at second reading of the ordinance, council had a very long conversation about what it should do in terms of how the penny was allocated. We began first reading with 40% of the penny going to community investment, 40% going to county advancement, and 20% going to the comment. At second reading, after some conversation about what Transportation Ad Hoc recommended, those percentages were shifted such that 30% of the penny was then allocated to community investment projects on the theory that the county advancement projects would be more substantial. So 50% of the penny was originally allocated there. I say "on the theory" because we had not yet compiled the categorized needs list. So the 80%, as we call it, are community investment and county advancement projects. The remaining 20%, as it exists today, are the comment enhancement projects. If we could go to the next slide, please. So there remains a conversation to be had about how to divide the 80%, as we call it. As I said before, the current allocation is 30 to community investment and 50 to county advancement. If you were to just take those numbers and based upon the costs that are set forth in the categorized needs list, if you just sort of redid the math, roughly 52% of the penny proceeds would need to go to community investment, and roughly 28% of the penny proceeds would need to go to county advancement. And so the conversation that came out of Transportation Ad Hoc was a suggestion that the overall allocations be adjusted so that the proportion shown in the categorized needs list was also reflected in how the penny itself is being split. And effectively, the way you do that is you flip the percentages. So instead of having 50 go to county advancement, you have 50 go to community investment. And instead of having 30 go to community investment, you'd have 30 go to county advancement. And so that has been a big part of the conversation here over the last couple of weeks. And if I could, next slide, and then we'll come back to everything. We had a question posed both at the T-PAC and then ultimately by some members of the Transportation Ad Hoc, asking sort of, well, where are we? How much of the projects can we actually do? And so this is a loose calculation because as you'll see, the first grouping of projects is the 80%, right? It's everything other than comment-based projects. And right now, the inflation-adjusted cost, so remember, the non-adjusted number was about $4.1 billion, but the inflation-adjusted cost is $8 billion or more. And so if you allocate 80% of the current penny to the non-comment-related projects, you'd have about $3.6 billion. We anticipate collections in 25 years of about $4.5 billion. You'd have about $3.6 billion to allocate to your 80% projects, meaning you'd get about 45% of them funded in the new penny. Right now, the inflation-adjusted cost presented to us by the comment is about $1.1 billion. If you look at the current penny allocation, which is 20% of $4.5 billion, you're at $900 million, meaning you've got a funding percentage of about 82% the way the penny is currently allocated. Finally, let's take a look at the very last slide, and then we'll pause, Madam Chair, for questions. We just wanted to highlight for you the next couple of things that will be happening, one of which is not on here because we found out about it and confirmed it today, but we understand there will be another Transportation Ad Hoc Committee meeting scheduled for July 2, or at least that's something that's being discussed. There will be a public hearing on the penny ordinance on July 9. And you may recall that council is taking the unusual step of holding a public hearing but not holding a vote that night. Council has also taken the unusual step of publishing that notice of public hearing more than one time. In fact, it ran on Sunday, June 16. It ran on Sunday, June 23. It's going to run again on June 30. And then finally, it'll run again on July 3. Why are we running it four times? Well, we want to make sure folks know about the public hearing. It's an important public hearing. This is a very important matter that will be on the November ballot. And if all of the things stay the same, on July 16, council will be asked to do two things. It'll be asked to give third and final reading to the penny ordinance. It'll also be asked to approve a resolution that actually is the document pursuant to which you will approve these principles. So that's what, that's where we've been, and this is where we're going, and we're here to answer questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jones. I know we have a few folks, colleagues online. Ms. Newton was here, and we did roll call since then. Councilman English has joined. Got it. So Newton and English are online. I do want to open it up. We can, you know, start with questions for Mr. Jones. We could start with, if you have a thought. Mr. Weaver.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, Ray, thanks for adding the clarification that I mentioned on special is new roads. Thank you for including that. My question is on the $20 million per district. So what if a road extends into three different council districts? What do you do about that? Does everybody get a percentage of that counted towards their $20 million? I mean, who's, and if that's the case, who keeps track of that? The Transportation Department would keep track of it, and that's a conversation we've had with Mr. Maloney. And I think in your example, I think, yes, if there's a road that is being funded by the penny that happens to touch more than one council district, it could count in the $20 million. Count towards the $20 million. Okay. I kind of thought originally when that was proposed, that the $20 million would be set aside per district. So $220 million would kind of be, and then we kind of dole it out from each district. I guess that's not really feasible, I guess. Okay. I was thinking we'd have more say over where that went, but that's okay. That's a bridge yet to be crossed.
Well, and you know, I think when, when we initially, I think that motion came about, I don't know if the body fully had a discussion around that, but I do think there, there's a lot of nuance in it and actually executing it. And, you know, I still question of if that is the best way to go about this because ultimately, the penny is for improving our communities as a whole. And so when you, I don't know, when you set that dollar amount, then you do have to be able to answer all of these questions.
Right.
Of what happens. And then what if there isn't a project? What if you need more than $20 million?
Oh, I definitely think, yeah, some districts obviously need a lot more, but that was the minimal.
That's what I'm saying, so whether $20 million doesn't get you anything.
Yeah.
Then he's like, $20 million just sits there.
I can spend $20 million now, let me tell you.
Well, then I think that's the key, too.
Not a problem.
It wouldn't be an "I." It would be a.
Right.
A rating of projects, I think, going through the same principles process of figuring out what makes sense. Because I think we want to create a fair system where it's not perceived that council members are picking and choosing. But I do think that is a piece that I still have a question about, is how do you make it make sense and explain it versus, you know, taking all that money and just sticking to projects that we've identified in the needs list? So I see, I'm sorry, Mr. Weaver, did you have anything else?
Thank you.
Ms. Newton, and then Mr. Livingston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
So I wasn't going to ask a question about the $20 million per district, but I will just note, hearing Mr. Weaver's question and the comments, that I do have questions about that, and whenever the appropriate time is to discuss it, would appreciate it. I have two primary questions for now, and then I'll pause for my other colleagues. So first is, I would like to thank everyone for taking the feedback and incorporating, when you have those communities where there's a sole means of ingress or egress, that we address that on the priority list. So thank you. I guess I just want to add, and I'm not sure who considers it, because I was the person who made that point, that it's not exclusively what I would like to have considered, when it's the sole means of ingress and egress, but when there are primary thoroughfares that go through communities and areas that we also think about improvements to those roads. So unfortunately, I'm not as familiar with the Northeast or other parts of the counties to name roads. I can make some up. But in my area, for example, Garner's Ferry, while there, it's not the main means of ingress and egress because there are roads that come into Garner's Ferry Road, but if you're getting into the heart of Hopkins and Lower Richland, you're either going to go through Garner's Ferry, or you're going to go down Leesburg, or potentially, you know, Bluff Road if you're looking at District 10. So I would like for us to explore an opportunity to look at things like that. So there might be a hook or a crook through which you can connect 50 million little roads, but if it's a primary thoroughfare, maybe it's Clemson Road or Dutch Fork Road, again, those aren't my parts of town, I would love for that to be considered. So that's a note. My question is, this is a work session where we don't take action, and we have received a lot of information today where the body may want to take action, looking at the funding for priorities, for example. What is the appropriate forum, given this information, where a recommendation like that would come before council? So a note and a question. Thank you.
Ms. Newton, right now, based upon schedule, the July 2 Transportation Committee meeting would be that process. So this information would then appear in that committee for action to be taken that then would go to the full body.
Okay. Thank you. And that was my question, and I guess my other comment question was, you know, is there an opportunity to consider the broader category of major roads that I was thinking of, or is it already included in some category that I've missed?
I would let Mr. Jones, I assumed it was already included in the other categories, but I'll have Mr. Jones, I guess, clarify if you need to call a friend.
Madam Chair, so I think it's definitely taken into account because a lot of those roads are major traffic roads. I mean, and so I think, I think it's here. If you want, if the council was inclined, there's two different subcategories of points that are currently read, that you get additional points if you're the sole means of ingress and egress. That could easily be changed and perhaps discussed at the Transportation Ad Hoc to read the primary means of access for a community. I think you get to a very similar place. So that's, that's something that could be done if folks wanted to see that. Also, if I may, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
The question raised by Mr. Weaver, to the extent that there are some things to the extent that there's something specific that a community, perhaps a community you represent, believes is really important to be done, say for instance, with the $20 million. Under the Principles, number 6C, there's 10 points available for a project that is indicated to be in the upper 25% of what needs to be done by a group of stakeholders. So I think by example, if a group of folks that live in a particular district suggests, look, this is the number one thing that's got to get done here, and they come to a council member and say that, then there's a mechanism for that to be accounted for. And that's directly from some conversations that council had.
I wanted to have Ms. Newton, if you could, just a clarification on your comment related to, I guess, when you talk about your main fair roads, when you use the Garner's Ferry example. So are you saying that the addition that was placed in here is something that you don't like, the isolated communities? Are you saying that is not something that you like? Or are you saying you like it and?
Thank you for the clarification. So the way that I interpreted this, the inclusion of this, was that it seemed to spring from a comment that I made where I did specifically say sole entrance and exit, but I also mentioned something else. So I'm in the yes and category. I 100% believe that if there's a community that must use a certain road to be able to go about their lives, that that should be given a high priority. So that's a yes. And also, the other part of my comment was, there are also roads that are not, you know, Garner's Ferry Road goes to more than one place, but it is absolutely key and central to how people are able to get around in Lower Richland, from Lower Richland, and to Lower Richland. And so I would want that to additionally be considered. And not Garner's Ferry Road by name. Again, I just can't name your roads. But Mr. Jones's language of primary means of access or whatever the case may be, for me, would be a satisfactory addition to the sole means of ingress and egress category.
Thank you. We did have a few others with their hands raised. I do think that now is the time to have the conversation related to the 20 million, Ms. Newton. But if you would let me, let a few others get their questions in, and I think we can definitely come back and continue to have that conversation because I do think that's something that, you know, the public would have interest in as well. Mr. Livingston and then Mr. Branham.
Yes. Regarding the 2012 viable unfunded projects, is there, is there a specific list of those? Because I think that's going to be important if we don't have a specific list of those. When we get on time to do those. But there is a specific list of those. Is a cost associated with that particular list? Because I think those two things are really important before we move forward.
Mr. Livingston, I'm aware that there is a list. I see Mr. Maloney here. I hate to put him on the spot. I don't know whether you have a specific cost that you've associated with those.
You recognize Director Maloney?
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
And we worked with StanTech on this as far as expanding that list to every unfunded project. I think it was in over 100 million, between 100 and 120 million, bringing those up to 2024 cost estimates from what they previously were in 2012.
So 120 million?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So 120 million for the 2012 unfunded projects.
And that list should be separated as the 2012 on the needs assessment that we received from StanTech. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Livingston?
Also too, the last time there's, in the referendum as well with the penny, there was a designated amount as relates to the administrative costs for the Transportation Penny. How we doing that this particular year when it comes to the administrative costs? How we factor that in? And we thought, we're not having to do that?
In the current penny?
No, the new penny.
In this plan penny.
Plan penny.
It's a, it's a line item. So there's construction cost estimates in 2024. And then there's a separate line item below that. Does it remain that way in everything that we've had? Yes. I don't remember, recall the percentage.
60%.
60% for engineering, construction, administration, other things that would come up.
And, Madam Chair.
You recognize.
Just from a pure legal perspective, and in looking over the statute with Attorney Wright and our team, we're not required at this point to separate the costs into administrative costs versus capital. What we are required to do, as council knows, under the DOR guidelines and the revenue procedure that I've meant, a revenue ruling I mentioned earlier, is those administrative costs always have to be tethered to a specific capital project. And that is the way we've been running the penny program now for a number of years.
Last question. I recall with the last penny, there was concerns about utilizing those funds for public information, community engagement, trying to designate certain projects, you know, local small business projects and so forth, making sure that they score so many points. Now, obviously, we're going to still do those things. And probably, it may be a burden and increase on our current staff. So that means we may have to factor in funding to do those things with the new penny. It's something I think we need to figure out to not just assume that's not going to cost our staff more money for this particular program because it will, because we can't pay for those things with the penny. And it'd be a good idea to try to figure out, kind of estimate what that kind of cost might be.
All right, Mr. Livingston, can you tell me, like, give me an example? I guess clarify what you mean so I can understand.
Like, let's say, for example, if we do some robust stuff with the website that only associated with the penny. We, you know, like what we're doing now, how to highlight. Also, that's not. That's all I have right now, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Branham?
Thank you. I, just a couple few things. I do like Councilwoman Newton's suggestion about maybe changing or substituting that word sole for primary. And I just also want to clarify, make sure I kind of understand that metric correctly. But it looks like under the proposed weighting for those scenarios where it's the sole or primary means, on page six of 14 in the packet for the work session today.
Thank you.
At the bottom there, it's under number two. It looks like if it's the sole means of ingress or egress, it would be weighted 10 times, you know, heavier than that item 2A, which would be the more standard metric for the other scenarios. Is that right?
That's right. Up to 20 points still. You're still capped at 20.
Capped at 20? Okay. All right. And then on the categorized needs list from the information that Ray handed us, that line item under community investment needs, the type that's programmatic, looks like that's the single biggest line item we have here. And that's, in parentheses, there are resurfacing sidewalks, dirt roads. So that includes repaving already paved roads? Is that right?
We understand that's the resurfacing. Yes, sir. To the extent they need it.
All right. Maybe just for clarification, Mr. Maloney, I remember having some conversations about the road maintenance fee. And, you know, what, could the types of things that the road maintenance fee is spent on also be spent? Can we have penny tax dollars spent in that same way for resurfacing or repaving?
There's some overlap in that category. The road maintenance fee is running about 6.5 million a year as far as our revenue source. And that is covering all the labor materials and equipment to run roads and drainage and do all the routine maintenance that we have. Generally, non-capital. There is some resurfacing done with that or with CTC funds that come in, you know, from County Transportation Committee. And that probably covers the bulk of when we have resurfacing at the public work side of things, as well as sidewalks and other things that that does fund. But as far as the need that we found, it doesn't nearly, it would not cover the 655 miles we're at now of paved road just with county maintained. And we know that in this amount, the city's asking for a considerable amount to be able to in 25 years, you know, complete all the roads in the city.
Is that the bulk of the request then for the resurfacing under the needs list? Is it a city request?
It's partially city. I believe it was in the neighborhood of 400 million. There's the county. And then there was a smaller request from South Carolina DOT District 1.
Madam Chair.
You recognize.
Would also say that the 2012 needs that we discussed earlier, that's where they live as well, in that number.
Thank you.
So it's not, so we are legally permitted to expend penny tax money on resurfacing?
Yes.
And repaving? Okay. And then do, we're getting a little bit more information about how that line item splits up with the city request to repave every road in the city, 400 million of the 1 billion 900 million. How does other resurfacing and like the sidewalk and dirt road, I guess, is that maintenance or paving there? Just at that kind of high level of three or four categories, how does that break out in that 1.09 billion?
I, I don't believe I had the breakout of that.
I think we do. Just give me one second.
Is it in the back?
Yeah. So right now, resurfacing is all resurfacing, including the cities, including the DOT, including any other resurfacing that's been identified in the needs list. Of the billion 90, 690 resurfacing, 200 to sidewalks, 200 to dirt road paving.
Thank you. That's all I have now, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Bear?
Thank you. I think I primarily just have statements. That is, initially, I was a little confused with the flip-flopping of the percentages. But I'm clear. I'm clear, and I can appreciate that a lot better. Having the breakdown and also just noting specifically, what is a county project? What is a community project? I think that's going to be extremely helpful to help us communicate what that looks like and even the messaging that we have because there was really a fine line and I think many of us were confused as what it was. So I'm glad we, that suggestion was made because it does make a lot more sense to me. And then I would also just state that I think that County Council has had, has its good and bad days with the penny. And we now experiencing a lot of days with the penny. Forward, should we move forward with the new penny, I'd like to think that we have a model that works and that we would stick to that model in moving forward, should we adopt a new penny. I just want to say that because I think that that's some, some conversations that I'm having, people are acting as if we're going to hit the reset button. And I don't think, and you know, that's almost ridiculous, but why would we hit the reset button when we've gotten plenty stripes as to how to do this? So I just wanted officially to say that. I don't think that if it ain't broke, let's don't try to fix it. We got a good thing going. And then I guess I need to jump on board with this $20 million conversation that obviously we need to dig deeper into.
I would definitely say if you're ready, if that was your last comment, when you got done, that was going to be the next topic. And so now go back to the 20 million.
Okay. So, and that is, because I got a little confused with the conversation that's going on. 20 mil, and this is now a question. So even though we've set aside $20 million for each county district, that is not all the funds that are being allocated to be spent in a particular district.
That's correct. It's a minimum.
It's a minimum of $20 million, which means that if there is a project that needs additional funds, then it could very well be supplemented from the overall budget that we have set aside for the penny tax.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm good with that area right now. I'll hold here and let someone else dig deeper into the 20 million.
Ms. Newton, did you want to share your thoughts? You might have lost Ms. Newton.
Oh, sorry. I have, I'm double muted here. So thank you. I'm not ready to share thoughts because I'm actually a little bit unclear on exactly how it would work. And so my first request would be if Mr. Jones or the appropriate person could give an overview of, as it is envisioned now, if there were a penny tomorrow, what would the administration of this 20% look like? So if we could start there.
And please correct me if I'm wrong, but have we discussed how that would be administered at this point? Yeah. So I think that is where we are, Ms. Newton. We, as the body, need to talk about that, discuss it. The motion came from a member of our body to have that. And we need to discuss what that looks like moving forward. So there are no recommendations at this point.
Okay. And again, I understand that it's before us to discuss in this work session. Would it be appropriate for the maker of the motion to, as a starting point, say what they have in mind? I don't want to drag this out, but I'm just not sure what to respond to.
I understand. I don't think you're dragging it out. I think it's a conversation that needs to be had, and this is a time to have it. So I don't think it's being dragged out by any means. And I think the conversation should be had by the body. The maker of the motion was originally Councilmember Branham. Councilwoman Branham, did you have any thoughts you'd like to share behind the intent of your motion related to the 20 million per council district?
Yeah, I mean, it was really just to ensure that every district receives some minimum amount of direct benefit. And so it was absolutely meant to be a floor and not a ceiling as far as the labeling of expenditures and the assignment of those expenditures to each district. No, I don't really have a lot to say about that right now. Maybe Mr. Weaver does. I know he was very interested in that topic.
Okay. Well, may I ask a question then for the body, I guess?
Yes, I just want, let me follow it to Mr. Newton. Sorry, to Mr. Branham first. So I guess, Mr. Branham, with initially with the motion, were we going on the assumption that a council district would not get funding? Is that where this was coming from? That you were feeling as if somebody wouldn't? And this was a motion to ensure that a district would?
I mean, the concept didn't originate with me. It originated from conversations with colleagues. And I was kind of just a mouthpiece to bring it into the motion of the assignment of the categories and the allocations between those categories. So, I mean, that, you know, I've talked with Director Maloney some about, you know, how it would play out. He's represented to me that he doesn't think there'd be any difficulty at all, you know, honestly, assigning $20 million of direct benefit in those two categories to each council district. And, you know, I kind of have confidence in him and in that. It didn't come from a place of suspicion or paranoia.
Well, and that's fine. I guess I was asking because based upon now that we have the recommended categories and the breakdowns, I guess I'm still trying to understand the need for it because it appears to me that the county as a whole is being covered by different projects. So I wasn't sure of the need for it, and that's what I was trying to understand.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. You recognize, Councilwoman Weaver?
Thank you. If I could expound on that. So I'll tell you where a part of it came from. I was asked by the city fathers, if you will, in Forest Acres to bring that up because they felt like they didn't get their fair share, if you will, of the last penny despite generating a good bit of sales tax. So they asked me to bring to the table of discussion, should every council district get a minimum? And so as I pointed out, the meeting that that was discussed, if we set aside 220, 220 million, 11 districts at 20 million each, that's still only about 8% of the 4 billion. It's still a relatively small amount. But it would just ensure It's still a relatively small amount, but it would just ensure that it's countywide projects going on. Now granted, some districts are going to get a whole lot more than that. It's a minimum, not a maximum, of course, so they just wanted to make sure that they had a seat at the table, if you will, on some future projects, that's it.
Okay. I think my, what I'm still trying to understand is, based upon where we are now and knowing the breakdown, knowing that there's needs and the way the system is set up with the ranking, I guess I'm trying to understand what, why else are we adding? And is it just a feel-good motion? Or is there really?
Pretty much.
Okay. Thank you. No, that's, that's helpful. Thank you, because I really understand if we felt as if there was something missing here now that this, this part of the motion was going to add something that we didn't already have. Because I feel like what is here, the project categories and the principles, is pretty comprehensive. And so that's what I was trying to understand, well, where is this extra piece? What are we missing in this that we feel like we needed the extra?
Well, there's, there's no question that the outlying, less developed districts have a lot more needs. There's no question about that. But for those of us in a little more developed districts, they wanted to just ensure that they were getting their fair share of sidewalks and greenways, if you will, if they didn't need road paving and all that. So that's where the 20 million came from. And there's, there's still plenty of bucks to go around still, so after the 220 million.
I, I don't know, I mean, you heard it was a, really it was a cost of 8 billion to get things done, so we actually won't get it all done. So, I'm sorry, hold on. I had Ms. Newton first, because she let me talk first. So then Ms. Newton, Ms. Baron, Mr. Livingston.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and this conversation is helpful. And while I can't speak for the fathers of the city, I can speak for some of the fathers and the mothers of the country, who certainly feel like they didn't get their fair share of the penny either. So that, that is not, that is certainly not a unique feeling. And so, given where we are with this conversation, I don't know if this is the time for my comment, but I'll just say it, because this is very amorphous, is if the vision was that we have this list of projects, and then if any of those projects are in a district, that they get added up, and we say, okay, we've spent a floor of $20 million, or if it was, we've identified these projects, and there's some sort of additional 20 million. So I, I'm going to have to go back and look at my list in light of the changes to, to this part of the allocation, to kind of see what my feelings are. But whether this is the format or not, or our criteria address it or not, you know, this is a, a tax that would be paid by the entire community for the benefit of the entire community. And I'll just say, I certainly understand and fully support the desire to make sure that we are really taking care of the most pressing needs everywhere in Richland County.
Thank you, Ms. Baron.
Thank you. So I, I'll just kind of really say that I, I think that we have a comprehensive plan, and it's indeed going to cover a lot of areas. But as for someone who I hear on a regular basis, that my constituents feel as though they were left out with a lot of the projects. This $20 million, you can call it a feel-good, whatever you want to call it, but it's, I think it still provides some type of assuredly to, to our residents to note that at least $20 million is going to be spent in your district. And, and, you know, is that, is that the, the ceiling? No, right. It, it is, it is just the baseline to, to at least say, this is where you start, and it puts everybody on, on the same playing field. Because there's no secret, you know, when we're in the city of Columbia, and these many, there are many projects that need to be done in the city of Columbia, a lot of our funds are going to be spent with these mass, big projects. But for someone who represents an area that's still trying to get dirt roads paved from the first penny, you know, still trying to, to get bridges and things open, then, you know, I, I would like to see this, this $20 million stay. It does give us somewhat of a check and balance system to, to note that say, hey, we're going to stay true to the process, and, and not that, you know, I think that someone's going to, to lean one way or the other in this process, but I do believe that it just, it's a good measure to say, in every district, there will be a minimum of $20 million that will be put forth in your district. And in addition to, dot, dot, dot. I think that's a good selling point. That is something that people can buy into. They, you know, just to come and say, hey, we've got 4, 4 billion or potentially 8 billion dollars that we're going to spend across the, across the county, you know, that's a blanket statement. But if I could say, we're investing $20 million in every 11 district, county districts, that to me, that's palatable. That says, this is something that County Council believes and says that we, we want to have a baseline here. And it gives everybody, starting, we're all starting at the same place, and then spreading abroad. Because there, there's no secret. And I'll, I'll say it one more time, there's no secret, there are areas that need more. But just because they need more, one should not get left out at all. And, and it, and I don't think it's intentional, but there, there are districts like mine and others represented, that we, we just didn't, we didn't see our fair share of projects. And so I'd like to make sure that we do that. So I would encourage us to, let's, let's just keep it the same. And I know all the wheels on the bus are going around and around in our heads to figure out how we can, you know, change it or, or leave it the same, but I'd like for us to keep it the same. Thank you.
Councilman Livingston.
I'm glad we're having this conversation, because I was kind of misinformed in terms of what we're talking, what we're really talking about, and we're talking about the 20 million. Because it's pretty obvious to me, from looking at the project waste and everything else, there'd be far more than 20 million dollars spent in every district. That's, that's very clear. So, so I wasn't thinking in terms of spending 20 million dollars in a district. I thought, you know, it was supposed as a opportunity for a unique, special-type project or something in a district, you know, above and beyond whatever we're doing. It, it, what my interpretation was. It wasn't my idea, wasn't even sure whether it supported or not, but that was, that was my interpretation.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. And like I said, I, I think this is a time to have a conversation, so I'm glad we're having it, because I do think when the motion was made, there was not fully discussed with everybody. So there is a lot of folks left up to interpreting what it meant. And so to have a conversation, to understand what the intent was, or what we would like to see moving forward, and then we need to be able to also provide staff with that information, that they can add that, his principles and principles. Because I don't think it's enough a 20 million aside fee trick, and we spelled out what that looked like, put a lot of energy into the rest of the penny to spell out how we're getting there. So that's all. Wanted to have a conversation around that and, and get to this, all get to the same kind of place on it. Because I, I do think, you know, Mr. Weaver, I hear what you're saying, and I think that makes sense. I think, you know, a question or concern I would have is, okay, well, you know, for districts that have a municipality and unincorporated, you know, for a municipality that's already getting some projects funded, and then if they get something, I mean, there's still that you could have an issue in a, a district of, oh, municipality got more than unincorporated, right? And so I guess I want to make sure, because we are spending a lot of time talking about how to create a fair and reasonable approach on the community investment and county enhancement piece. I don't want to have this extra piece appear that it's not a part of this. Does that make sense? And that it's a fair thing that we're doing? Yes ma'am, Mr. Tratio.
Thank you. And I also see Ms. Newton has raised her hand, but I have two things, and not directly related. One is, sorry.
Well, let me, can I see if Ms. Newton wants to finish talking about this before we go to another topic?
Sure.
Because she might want to talk about this.
Great. That works.
Okay. Ms. Newton, did you have a comment related to the 20 million per district conversation?
I was raising my hand about something else, but if we're, we're closing this chapter, I'll just say that I concur with Ms. Baron's comments about looking at ways that we can include it and have language around it. It looks like it does no harm, but it certainly can do quite a bit of good for those of us in communities where, like I said, I still have to look people in the eye every time I go to their neighborhood meeting, and, and they ask me why their road wasn't paved, or why X, Y, Z didn't happen from the previous penny. And people just want to make sure things are happening in their area. And I will hold my future questions until everybody else has a chance to speak. Thank you.
Mr. Jones, is there, in looking at the, the principles and categories list, is there a way to incorporate language into our principles that gets to the heart of what colleagues are saying, that gets to the heart of that every district will have a minimum dollar spent? Is there a way to incorporate that as into one of our principles and how we operate and approve projects?
So just a couple of thoughts. You know, we've got these general conditions that sort of lay over the whole program. If, if, if folks wanted to have something to point to, you could have a statement rather than a minimum, you could simply say that the dollars will be spent equitably, so that each part in each district will be touched by the program. I, I think that's likely occurring, but we could certainly put it in writing, we could polish it up a little bit, we could either keep or not keep the $20 million, so we could make it an and instead of an or, you know. We want to make sure that it's spent equitably, and that there's at least a minimum spent in each district, if that's what folks would like. I think we've got some options in this general conditions area to do that.
Thank you. All right. I want, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
That's okay.
Pals you, but I really wanted to make sure, as a work session, that we really got to that, because we have not had a chance to discuss that.
Madam Chair.
Yes ma'am.
Sir. Today is, sir.
Sorry. Mr. Branham, yes sir.
I just wanted to point a clarification, is that okay, before we move on?
Yeah, we're fine. We're, we're, she's going to the next topic now.
We got to 3:30.
What? Okay, I'm, I'm just seeing here on page five, under the general conditions, A.
Are you still talking 20 million right now? Or are you going to another topic?
Yeah, 20 million.
Okay, all right. Where, where are you at now?
A3, under the principles on page five, it like, it goes over to the page six at the very top, each county council districts that receive a minimum of 20 million in funding from the new penny for projects in the community investment or county advancement categories. I mean, it's, it's there, right? It's incorporated, at least to that extent. It's in the, it's in the principles, as written. I'm sorry that there was confusion, I, I was not aware.
That's, that's what happens when the body hasn't talked about it. So it was good for us to all talk about it, so we can all be on the same page.
Yeah, and you know, as the maker of the motion, I would be happy to hear from anybody who needs further clarification, you know, before now, but I was, I'm here.
We just had the conversation, so thank you for participating in that.
Yes ma'am.
Yep. Councilwoman Tratio, you recognize.
Thank you so much. Want to go back to two things from the presentation. So one is just maybe a point of clarification. The first one regarding emerging needs, I had a thought as, because I think this is the first time that this is, this part has really come around. Say there's a flood or something, we need to do some emergent work, we have penny funds available, we can put those dollars to work immediately. Let's just say we get federal state funds, emergency funds that come later. It is my, I would hope that we would craft this in such a way that we could put those funds back to use. So say if we pulled money from penny funds existing to repair a bridge, and then we got some state federal money, we could reimburse ourselves in the penny to continue on work that needs to be done. Is that something that we can, yes, I think that's a point of clarification for Mr. Jones?
Ms. Jones, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I actually think that's, might be a case-by-case analysis. So for instance, at least in my experience, most federal funds comes with a lot of, so we say, compliance strings. And so we can certainly put in here that if, if dollars are spent, so under the additional funding category right now, if a project has matching funds, it gets additional priority. We could, we could make provision that if a project is funded with penny, penny funds and can be reimbursed, that then that would be reimbursed. I think that would be the intention, I look to Mr. Maloney, as to whether or not there's examples in the current program, to where we're already doing that, or whether we should sort of put it in these principles. You have a thought one way or another, Mr. Maloney?
We do have examples. North Main Street had 20 million in Tiger Grant that came in to help facilitate that project that was, you know, over $50 million, so that's what helped launch it, was having that kind of fund available to do that extent. Resurfacing, we have 1.4 million in grants that came in to help extend the program, not necessarily on a particular road, but that gave us, you know, additional, you know, 5% to the program. So anything that we do have those on, we could look at that. We do have points for that already in this document to help score projects and advance it. But I did want to say, just with resurfacing, reconditioning roads as they are, bringing them back up, dirt road program, those are programs, and it does say that in the details in here, that, you know, when you're looking at the scoring, that's not how we'd emerge those programmatic projects. We already have council, excuse me, council-approved ordinances that indicate how those projects would have prorata, distribution around the, the county based on the inventory that exists in each district, so both for dirt roads and resurfacing. And then we have kind of a computerized way of making sure they get taken care of in each district on the worst roads. But there is a prorata even with resurfacing to make sure it does get distributed around the county. So these, all these scores are really based on the non-programmatic, all the big projects out there, the big intersections, big widenings and things like that, how we would bring, emerge those to the top of the list. And to do that, we need to know what the score of all those projects are, so that would be something between now and the implementation we would have to have determined.
Thank you. Mr. Tratio, did I help answer your question?
I, I think so, and if there's, if council, if there's any point of improvement or clarification, again, suggested language that we, that maybe could help out with that, I would like to see that. So, and then I had another point of, I guess, clarification that I'd like to make, and that's on the project funding percentage, which I think is at page 13. And so just wanted to bring your attention to the comet line item in the funding percentage, and I wanted to be, make sure that my colleagues are super clear on this, that, that is not funding 82% of the total comet budget, but rather just 82% of what the comet has sought from this potential future penny, right? So the total comet budget does include other funding sources that are not as significant as the penny, but I, the, the comet, the comet's budget is, is larger, so the comet's just coming to counsel for what it seeks from the penny. So wanted to be, have everybody be super clear on that, so there will be that 18% gap. And would also seek to know, you know, if we closed that 18% gap from the 900 million to the 1.1, what that would look like in terms of a percentage of the total penny? I think it shakes out somewhere in the, between 20 and 25%, but I'm not entirely sure. So I'd like to bring that up as a point of conversation amongst my colleagues, just to see if we can close that, that part of the gap. And, and we can have these conversations offline too, but wanted to bring that up just to let, let folks know.
I want to make sure it was your last question, or a statement?
That was, that was a statement and, and an invitation.
Thank you. Ms. Newton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I'll just say, first regarding Councilwoman Tratio's last comment, I'm, I don't know if I'm 100% sure on what the ask is. If the ask is, you know, are we being asked to consider increasing the percentage of funds allocated to the comet? And... And so I'll just leave it there. So whenever we're talking about that, whether that's in a meeting or out of the meeting, I'm just not clear. Um, my question, I, we absolutely have to nail down the priorities and this is a great conversation. My question is, if you can point me to where it's included or tell me when and how we're going to make some other administrative decisions about how penny funds are spent? And the specific example that I would give is, obviously, any penny project that we follow is going to use county procurement. One of the things that we've done, my understanding with the current penny, is we've used the lowest bidder. And that is certainly a way to get a low cost project. And I always want us to be good stewards of the penny. Um, there are sometimes um certain projects or certain complications with projects where there are reasons where you might want to have a bidder that met other qualifications where cost wasn't the only driver. And I'm curious to know if something like that is contemplated with this penny. And if so, where would that fall in the process? When that would be determined? Um, would it be before the ordinance? How would that happen? And if my question doesn't make sense, I can try to clarify.
Mr. Jones, you're recognized.
So there's nothing in here that changes how the county normally procures and spends money. Uh, in fact, one of the overall conditions says, this program will be managed in accordance with standing county ordinance. And to the extent a standing county ordinance requires procurement and requires the lowest bidder, that's exactly how it would be accomplished. Um, so so there's nothing different contemplated in this program. Um, in terms of the administration of it, it is contemplated under section E, management of the new penny, that the transportation director and his department, having been through the needs list and having scored the projects, would then propose a budget uh to be incorporated in the county's overall budget for approval by council. So ultimately, council will be charged with approving the budget and the expenditures. But in terms of the mechanism for expenditures, no different than any other expenditure of county funds.
Madam Chair.
You're recognized.
Yes, and I think Ms. Newton's question is more of a procurement of priority process um and standards more more than a penny um question. So I think that's, that would be something to be discussed um regarding our procurement guidelines.
Ms. Newton, did you hear, were you able to hear Attorney Wright's response?
I did hear his response. And what I'll say is that that specific question may be a procurement question and we can take it up there. I would like for it to be considered because what we really want are successful projects that work for the needs of our community. And I think that there are any number of circumstances, let me just make up a hypothetical one, where you have that one community where there's truly one means of ingress and egress. And maybe the lowest responsive bidder can only do your project ten years from now. Well, that really doesn't work um if cost is your number one criteria. So there are circumstances where you can be a good steward where there are other factors that you may want to look to or expertise on a certain type of project. And so I'll ask staff after this meeting to direct me to how that can be considered. And also though, so that's a specific question as it relates to procurement. But additionally, the county has been implementing this program for years and we have certainly learned and we have certainly changed, you know, how we do certain things. In addition to that, I guess I'm wondering if there's been, for lack of a better term, an administrative review to say, gosh, you know, these are things that we're completely allowed to do the way things are written out and it works. But if only this county guideline were different or this process were different or this standard were different, we would able to, we would be able to be more efficient, um, more effective, what have you. Those are not the policy level decisions that we make as council, but we might have to enable our administrative staff through policy to be able to make some of those changes. And so I want to make sure that while we're doing our very best on the policy side, that we're giving our administrative staff the absolute best hand that they can have so that they can get these projects done. So ho- hopefully that makes sense. And maybe I need to take my question offline with the county administrator. But I just want to make sure that we're not just looking at overall principles of the penny, but that the people that are implementing it are also doing reviews, examinations, evaluations to say, and this is what we also need so that we can um fully execute the penny.
Thank you, Ms. Newton. Any further uh discussion or questions um related to the project principles or allocations? Mr. Jones, would you like to wrap us up and talk about next steps?
Sure thing. Uh, first, thanks for your attention today. Uh, it's been a long journey and we appreciate the work that's that's going on in the room and outside the room. So next, next up, as we said when we started, July second would be a transportation ad hoc committee meeting, uh, at which I would imagine recommendations would come forward regarding some of the questions we've discussed today. July ninth will be a public hearing with respect to the penny ordinance. Uh, and to the extent there's input there, uh, we would have time to incorporate it uh in anticipation of a third reading on July sixteenth. And also on July sixteenth, a resolution of council to approve the principles. So they go hand in hand.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Um, so I just wanted, I don't sit on the transportation ad hoc committee. Um, but I said to Councilman Branham, I said, it sounds like that we need to go to the next meeting.
I highly think we should. I mean, this is a a big topic, so yes.
Yeah, so I would just wanted to extend the, an invitation to all the non-committee members like myself to attend so that we can flesh out what we didn't get done today. Um, because I feel like there's going to be a motion that's going to come out of that committee. And, you know, maybe I'm I'm being presumptuous, but I just think that like, the best example is the conversation that we had about the twenty million dollars. If we had that conversation in a committee meeting, then, you know, we probably wouldn't have spent the time here. So that's what the committee is for. Committee is to get the work done so that when it comes before full council, it it should, we should just be voting. So I I want, I think that we need to show up next week to keep the conversation going.
Thank you for that, Ms. Barron. I I think you're right. The committee has had the conversations and worked on things. I think the twenty million piece uh was never brought to the committee. And so this has been the first time that the body could discuss it as a whole. Uh, but yes, you're typically right. Usually, that is where things have started, especially with uh the transportation pen. And we've been in committee. T-PAC has also reviewed and given us recommendations. And we've continued to have uh conversations. But I I do hope, you know, this work session is truly that a work session, time for us to talk through things. And so I hope that, you know, colleagues that are here today have brought that to the table, whatever it is they want to talk about and and not hold it to transportation ad hoc, because this was the extended work session for the conversation. It allows uh staff to go back and get any information that we need ahead of July second if there are concerns. Um, so I do hope, we still have fifteen minutes. If there's more that we'd like to discuss, um, I'm more than happy to stay here and and I'm sure Mr. Jones as well. So I don't want folks to feel by any means that we are rushing a meeting or if there's more you want to talk about. Ms. Newton?
Thank you. And I I had raised my hand before you said that, but I just have a really quick question. So um, I will be at the committee meeting and I absolutely agree we need to discuss things there. My question is, I thought Ms. Barron was going to ask it. Um, is that as a non-member of the transportation ad hoc committee, while I can certainly share my thoughts and participate, that's not a forum where I can make a motion. And so just clarifying from a, an administrative or or rules perspective would then my next, my only opportunity, I guess, to make a motion be at the council meeting that follows the July second ad hoc meeting.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, in the typical process of any way that our committees work any other time, I mean, yes, ma'am, we all don't sit on all the committees. And so you do have colleagues that are on the transportation committee that you could share your thoughts with. You can come to the meeting and express your thoughts then and what you would like to see. And, you know, the committee votes and they bring that recommendation to full council. And at that time, you know, if council has changes or doesn't agree, just like any other committee report, there is the ability to talk about that and make a separate motion during a full council meeting.
Thank you. And I I really wasn't trying to be funny about that. I just don't, you know, don't want to be dropping bombs in council meetings.
Oh, I don't want you to drop any bombs at all. And I and I say again, we do have time there. This is the time to discuss it. I don't want any council members to feel like we cannot discuss it right now. This is the time to discuss it. So you don't have to wait to July second. If you know what you want to talk about, we are here right now to discuss. So I don't want anybody walking away feeling as if they can't discuss anything they want to talk about. That is the point of the work session.
Well, what I want to talk about is thanking y'all for your time in this robust conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Newton, for logging in. I appreciate your engagement in this robust conversation. Anything else from colleagues in the room? Any further discussions? Anybody else online? I can see y'all hands, right? Item number three.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. English.
Thank you.
What you got?
Um, I kind of wanted us, and I know we've had this before, but, and I think it was provided at our strategic plan, but if we can, um, we we had our meeting. But if we could look at those amounts again that was provided for us per district, I think that would help and also get an update on that. Because I know for my district exact, um, there have been several roads that um are in process of being completed. So if we could get um an updated copy of that, I know we were provided that. And I think that would help in that discussion.
And I I want to make sure we are on the same page. So at the most recent transportation ad hoc committee meeting, uh, Director Maloney did provide a current status report of the current penny projects. Is that the list that you are referring to? The status where they are, what's next?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Director Maloney, or could you make sure that a that copy is sent out to Ms. English, please?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to be sure. Uh, also, we did have prior uh by district completed projects, um, and maybe that we'd update as well.
So did you want to see the prior projects as well in addition? So the the list he recently gave was the current projects. And then prior to that, there was a list of all projects, whether they were completed, design phase, or scheduled to be completed.
Well, the one that was by district.
Okay, he's shaking his head. He he's got it.
Okay, thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
You're welcome, Ms. English.
May I have that too?
Just send it to everybody again. It was everybody's district. It was broken down. Just send it. Awesome air and space. Anything else? Item number three.
Second.
Motion second, Madam Clerk.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Edie Ajorn, thank you.